Tuesday, July 15th. Before we go to the pledge and the prayer, I'm gonna make a clarification from the committee. What the ordinance committee did was get council approval to send that ordinance to the full council for action at a later meeting. So again, that was the committee meeting, sending the ordinance to the full council that will be publicized at a future meeting. Hope that helps.
Thank you. Because that was confused.
Yes, sir. For the record, that clarifies it. For our pledge, I'm gonna ask veteran Charles Dill Jr. to lead us.
Little rise. Place the flag and retreat with me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And our prayer will be led by Councilwoman Terry Rusar.
Yes, the Our Father, Praise and Unison. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us strength and guide us in our journey. In every trespass, as we forgive those trespass against us. And we give slavish to the Christian, the blessed and the oppressed. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, this evening, we're gonna start with personnel issues. Counsel, we have an item to ratify the separation of service for Tony Landry from the Abbeville Fire Department after exhausting 365 days of leave. Chief?
Yes, Counsel. He's been on sick leave for 365 days, which is state law. He is not able to come back to work. So by state law, we have to separate him. It doesn't mean that he can't come back in the future. It just means that we have to. By law, we have to let him.
Okay, thank you. Second. Yeah, okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you, Chief. Under Presentations. Number one, presentation of the GIS mapping, Alicia Wilks with the Acadian Planning Commission.
I gotta get the TV back on. I'm sorry.
Really get it set up.
While they're doing that, my name is Sarah Gary. I am the CEO of Acadian Planning Commission, and this is Alicia Wilks. She's our GIS analyst. And I'll just kind of give you the background of how we kind of got started on this particular project. The city of Abbeville received a DRA grant to do the plan that you guys, I think that was like a couple of months ago, a master plan as well as to provide GIS. So basically, taking all of your paper data, all your data that is in CAD, and putting it into spatial data, right? So that way, you can view it and analyze it, that type of stuff. And so that's kind of how we got here. And so Alicia's gonna kind of give a presentation of what you can use GIS for and also preview the work order system that, right now, that the electrical department is using. But the mayor would like to replicate that, that the electrical component was done as part of the grant. And so she would like to basically copy and paste that for the other departments. And so we're gonna kind of show what.
Right, and Counsel, you're gonna see that later in our agenda, that we are gonna address that for other departments if we choose. Please continue.
So yeah, so it's, this is kind of like, and you'll see there's two different components to it. The GIS component is one side of things, and then the work order system is a separate side. The work order system is, although they do kind of work together, as you will see from a visual component, the work order system is to basically get that set up per department. So I'll hand it over to Alicia to start. It looks like everything is kind of brought up.
Hi, sorry, the screen looked, I mean, I don't know if you guys can see it up here. But basically, when we think of the word GIS, we basically want to give you guys a better way to communicate and make data-driven decisions. And in the past, what we had to do is install ArcMap on everyone's computers so they could see this, and they had all kind of prices for software. But now, we're using an Esri system where we can just send you guys a link, and with a matter of minutes, you can view all the data that we pulled up. So what we did for Abbeville was, they needed infrastructure put into the system so that everybody could see. What we did was, we went out and collected specific data that they needed or converted it over from different CAD system, from sellers in different places that they had their data stored. But the biggest component after that is when you get all the data in the system, how do I look at it? How do I use it? So our biggest thing was to make sure that we find a user-friendly way so that you can just come in. And this is a link that I can send to anyone now. And basically, this is just something that she wanted, city-owned property, lift stations. You can come in here. As you can see, it's the yellow layer that I'm turning on and off. You can click on a layer, and this is one of our simple layers, right? And it just gives you any type of information. You could come in here also, a lot of times, and search by an address. But the other type of simple viewing applications that we really thought were really helpful were simple apps that we noticed that constituents ask, and they call all the time. Someone will say, hey, my address is here. Who's my councilman? Where do I vote? Simple questions. What we could do is, we could put all that information into an application, and they type their address in here on the side. And as soon as they type their address in, it'll tell them they're council member, and it'll give them all that information in a matter of minutes. So it's basically to help with efficiency. It's to help with, oh, am I laughing? To help with, to help with efficiency and communication across all departments. We want to make sure that if someone's looking at lift stations and the information is incorrect, everyone's seeing the same lift station, the same substation. And we had issues too, where they would go out in the field and a manhole was maybe not in a location. But with GIS, it gives you the chance to go in and click on a point on a map and see that location so that you know exactly where you're supposed to be at the time you need it to save yourself time. Now, the other issue we also had. Okay. What's the work order system? So a few times, you know, when you go, people call in and they have an issue. They're writing it down on paper, and we want to make sure some of that doesn't get lost in the system. So what we've created is a work order system where we've set up. Click here. So basically, we set up a work order system where you can come in, and if you click, this is the survey that constituents would see. And they would go in, and they would fill out their complaint and all the information. And we've also set up automation so that you could either go to the department that it would, the complaint would normally be sent to, and it'll also go to the person. If they fill out their email, as soon as you fill out one, it's gonna send you that information, letting you know that we received your request. And as soon as someone closes that, they would also get that correspondence that the request was closed. But the biggest thing we noticed that was helpful in here. I think the internet stopped working.
Or energy.
But just to give you guys, I'm just gonna go through and show you a sample. Within the work order system, the other part of the communication for the council is, on any given day, you want to know how many work orders are being done in your district. So with a simple click of a button, as you can see in this map here, there are 667 total work orders. But if I click on any council district here, it summarizes all that information. So just with the click, you can see how many are open. You can come here and get only open work orders in District A. We can get only open work orders in District B, and so on. And we can also get printed reports of that information sent to your email. And I think Councilman Brady, I don't know if it pulled up, but we had an automated email sent. And what it'll do is, every morning, we can send you guys an email of a summary of all of the open work orders in your district. So every morning, you could just get a report sent to you, or monthly, quarterly, however often you want, of all of this information. But these dashboards give you interaction capability to get those questions answered quickly. You can even change it by type of work order, branches on electrical wire. This also kind of helps you see certain areas that you're having more issues with, with different types of requests. And as far as like getting for the work order system, a lot of times, they're getting questions sitting at the office. So what I did was, I designed a work order filtering system so they can be at their desk at any point. And again, simple filters where you can turn on, you can see a table here. This one's just a little more complex. You can go through any work order, see what the complaint is, see what's the status of a complaint if you get a call. You can search by an address. You can search by the name of the person complaining. You can search any type of thing that they put into the system right here in this one application. And you can also, again, like I said, if you need to print out a report, you can get that. And right here in this system, you can click this button, and you also can add a new work order into the system. So basically, what we've done is, we've not only taken paper maps and paper information, but we put it into a system, but we've given you guys a platform to make it more user-friendly and more efficient so that you can get it in a matter of minutes. And it's just much more user-friendly. And this is very dynamic. So we kind of change it based on your needs. So we kind of send you the dashboard. You'll work with it a little bit, and you tell us any complications you have, and we can make those changes. Doesn't take very long to make those changes if you need. Do you guys have any questions so far? I know I kind of ran through that.
Would that mean another body has to sit here and take in the complaints and enter into the system? I mean, if I, as a regular citizen, says, look, my electricity is off, I need to let someone know. Do I have to have a computer to enter that? Or do I call a body to enter that?
Either are. So what we could do is, we have a link that's gonna go out on your website, wherever you want to put that link so that they know it's accessible. Because you have two people. There's one person who's gonna want to call in and give their complaint. So whether they were calling in or not, someone had to pick up the phone. But now that person picks up the phone, and when they put that complaint in, it's gonna go directly to the people it needs to go to. It's not gonna get lost in the system. So you can either call, but let's say someone's at home and they don't want to call. They can have access to the link to put in the complaint themselves, and it's still gonna go to that same body who was gonna pick up the phone. But it saves that extra step of putting the call in.
But to put it into themselves, they're gonna have to have access to a link on that computer, right?
Yes, or they can call.
The link would be on your website. So on your homepage, like I think right now on your homepage for the city of Abbeville, there is a complaint form or, you know, whatever, right? So this would, this form, that would take the place of that, right? And so should somebody want to, again, not everybody wants to do it themselves. I am the type of person versus calling, I'm gonna just enter the complaint. If I have a complaint, I'm just gonna go figure out the form. I'm gonna fill it out there. But my grandma, for instance, is a people person. She likes to talk to people. So she's gonna actually pick up the phone, and she's gonna call, right? The good thing about this is, you can take the complaint here at City Hall, and then instead of that person having to pick up the phone and then calling the electrical department because their complaint, their complaint is that the street light's out in front of their house, that person who is taking the complaint is just gonna fill out this exact same form, and it is going to be pushed out automatically to the electrical department for them to now say, okay, I've got an open work order, right? Because everybody is looking at the same information, right? I have an, I have a work order that is open that a light is out at 123 James Street, and they can then dispatch somebody there.
Yeah, well, my grandma, like your grandma, she can't work a computer.
And that's okay. She can call.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yes, she can call. And so like, y'all, I'm assuming there's a number that if, you know, you have a complaint, right? And your only form of making that complaint is through the phone, that they call a number, and they talk to a live body, and that live body takes that complaint. Right now, they're writing it on a piece of paper, and then they're picking up the phone, and they're calling whatever department it pertains to. In this case, that step is taken out because once they fill out, once the person who works for the city, who answers the phone, that takes the complaint, they're filling out that form versus writing it on a piece of paper, and it's automatically getting pushed out to the appropriate.
What I'm hearing, Councilman Campbell is asking, is that another person? I mean, because now, we have Chris Gootrow, our Public Works Director, that's handling all of that.
Chris, you want to answer that?
Yeah, so this, the work order system that we have now, that we created through my office, is basically the same thing as what they're gonna create. They're just adding extra layers to it. Everything's gonna go through their system. We're doing all the same work now. People are calling in. Somebody's entering at City Hall. It's all Public Works Department. Somebody's entering there. The council has the opportunity to enter it themselves also. So it's the same thing as what you just got used to for the past four or five months, except it's gonna give you reports that we can't, we can't take our work order system any further because of the platform that we're on now. Okay? So the platform with them is gonna take it a step further.
And this is the electrical system here. Like, this is live data. They have put in 667 work orders, and they have completed 598. Like, this is live. Like, they're using this system.
So the electrical is on your system now?
Yes.
So the rest of Public Works, who want to go on? Streetlights, you know, whatever, culverts, potholes.
And we have that on our agenda tonight.
Right, right. So that's just another layer that will happen on there.
Does that go to Stuart or goes directly? I don't know. It goes directly to Stuart or to you?
Teresa handles most of it because in the mornings, we issue out the work based on the work orders that come in. A lot of times, it's duplicate work orders. So we go through those. So it saves time. The guys go straight to the, straight to the problem, you know? They don't take a work order that's on top, do it, and then when they get to the end of the day, there's the same work order on the bottom because somebody else called in the same problem. So we go through, we go through them. Well, sometime it happens, but you know, we all, we all, I enter stuff twice sometimes too. You know, when it comes back to my desk, I'm like, why'd you do that twice? But it happens. We're all so busy, you know?
And with a location-based system, when Teresa pulls up the map, when she sees that there's 10 in a specific order and then one over here, when she's dispatching, it just helps her quickly decide where we should be spending time because she's now gonna send more people in this area because she sees that there's 10 here versus one all the way in a different area. It kind of like narrows that down so you can dispatch much quicker.
That's gonna be even more critical that we give the address when we want something done, right?
Correct. Every department, an address.
What's that costing you?
This is already created, yes.
Yeah, this one was part of a grant.
Electrical.
Forget the cost.
Thank you, Chris. And that's a good analogy because we're already doing that online at a Google form.
And I would just say, the ones that are submitted like through the website, like if someone just goes to the city's website right now and goes to report an issue, I get those emails, and then I enter every one of those into what we have now so Chris and Em get those. So this will just actually take off something. It'll be less that I'm like, their internet, and then I'm re-entering it now. So that way, it's not getting missed by any chance either.
So right now, you're receiving emails on?
Yes, ma'am. Anything that comes from the website goes to me.
Anything else?
No, do you guys have any other questions?
Because we've got you on the agenda next.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's the first presentation. The second is gonna be the presentation of GIS 360 data collection and electrical system asset identification.
I'm getting to your present part, sorry. I'll go ahead and introduce myself. My name is John Hornsby, and I'm with Fishtomater. I'm the engineering director there. I am filling in because the guy who leads this, Coy, his wife is like expecting a baby then the next day or two. So we felt it was best, he stayed on that and then, you know, played the husband, daddy movies. So, but what I'm gonna tell you all a little bit about is the use of spatial intelligence for what, which, actually, what you just saw. But creating your asset inventories, knowing what's out in the field and how we use technology that's there today to get the most accurate data that you're gonna see in your GIS system. So you can go ahead to the next slide. All right. So some of the challenges that we see in a lot of municipalities is age data. So the data is either from Asbills that were from the 1980s, 90s. Sometimes we go and we try and collect the data out in the field, but that's very cumbersome. It takes a lot of resources from, you know, having people go actually inventory stuff. Okay, that's a light pole. That's a signal. We have a stop sign here, and knowing where everything's at. So these are challenges that we've seen. And with that, and working with other municipalities, we started to take some of our advancements that we've been doing at Fishtomater. What we predominantly do is survey data and data collection and tying that into being able to create these asset inventories. So what I'm gonna show you, go to the next slide. It's a little video. So what we're doing now is taking a camera and attaching it to the top of the vehicle. As that vehicle drives around, it actually is picking up a 360-degree view of everything around it. We bring that data back in the office, and we're using what's considered machine learning, and we're teaching the computer and the models to find things as it's seeing it. So it'll say, there's a stop sign. Not just there's a sign. It actually knows that's a stop sign. That's a speed limit sign. That's a power pole. It's also picking up what's going on on the ground in front of it. So it's like, there's a pothole. There's cracking in the road. That stuff is not only timestamped, but it's also georeferenced. So we know where it's at on a map. That data can then be taken and put into the asset management system. Can even identify a squirrel. So picks up a little bit of everything. So again, we're using this out of the field. The data comes back. And those videos are then processed to be able to identify assets that you could put into your GIS system and have an accurate location of what that is and where it's at. So we go on to the next slide. So what are some of the features we're picking up? So I mentioned a couple of signs. This is a huge one. After a storm event, some of the, Laura Delta did a lot of post-disaster work. Signs, they mean everything. So being able to go right after a storm, drive the roadway, know what signs were there, which ones are missing, and be able to put those up. That helps your 911. It helps your emergency responders to know where they're going because without street signs, it's hard to give directions. So we can inventory signs on here. We can also pick up light poles, signals. Again, I mentioned the potholes, the conditions of the roadway, even the conditions of the ditches on the side of the road or they're blocked, culverts, or you have erosion problems, things like that. So all of that's captured in one swath, going out there and being able to pick up that data at one time. Next slide. So where does that data get stored? Great that y'all just saw everything that Acadian Planning has been working on because that's where that data is going back into. It's going back into that GIS system so that y'all can do that and create work orders. So knowing, hey, there's the light pole. Here's the electrical pole. Knowing where they're at, all of that ties right back into that asset management, and it runs through a GIS system. And what's also nice is that GIS system, as they were mentioning, it can be tweaked. So what's important to know about whatever asset was picked up in the field and like what pieces are most important to y'all? So the best part about this is it can be streamlined to what's most important to y'all, what's most important to Chris, what's most important to whoever's out there. Those attributes can be put in and identified in that way. On the next slide. So the one that y'all are gonna be talking about tonight is actually the electrical system. And this is kind of a great place to start. Where are the electrical poles? What's on them? Those types of things to identify and pick up. As I mentioned, after a disaster, this is a great tool to have. Working with FEMA, they like to say, what condition was that in? But you have the data saying, this is the condition it was in. We have a picture. We have a location. So, and it also helps to put in all those work orders. So that's kind of an example of one of its use cases. Other use case is condition of roadway. So yes, you will go out and we'll pick up the existing condition, but over time, you can actually do more periodic runs, especially in areas that you know are high-traffic areas, to see what are the changing conditions of the roadway? That way, you can make decisions on where should we overlay roads? Which areas need it the most? Also, again, I'm going back to that disaster piece. They like to say, what did roads look like before that? Like, you're saying it's stayed flooded for this long, and you had, you know, issues. What did it look like? So again, you have that data to back up and reinforce that. So tying all of this together, this is a kind of a use of a new technology that can be pushed out, added to a system that you already have. It's a great way of saving manpower, people being out, having to go and literally count poles, identify GPS minutes. This is a quick way of doing it to get a more accurate asset in the GIS platform that y'all already have and to pipe back to work orders. So, I think that's it. Yeah, we got a closing slide, but do y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Jean. That just, that tells us the unlimited abilities of tracking the assets owned by the citizens of Abbeville.
Exactly, yeah. And it's really neat where technology is kind of going and again, it's safer if you're someone walking the side of the road, all different things. Definitely.
Any questions, Jean?
All right.
Great presentation.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, then ends presentations under approval of bills. Number one, to ratify bills paid in the month of June, one twenty five. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose, that's passed. Under new business, to award the contract for the year twenty twenty-three LCDBG clearance program, phase one demolition of blighted structures to lengthen construction with a concurrent contract change order, number one, to eliminate several structures to reduce the contract price contingent upon approval from the state laws of community development.
Do we have any more of your?
Well, yes. Todd, if you can update us on the status of that?
Sure, these bids were received on May twenty-ninth. As the agenda outlined, we were over budget on the project. So we're proposing for this contract, which is phase one, with a concurrent change order. The change order will remove six structures from the project and also some of the topsoil and materials that can be held on the site. This change order reduces the original bid of two hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. It'll be reduced by a hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Making the contract price one hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred dollars. So this will get it into budget and allow you to move on with the fortune of the project.
So with these changes, the state would approve it?
The state will need a concurrence, so the motion is subject to their concurrence, but we've had initial discussions with them and appears that it will be approved once it's.
Outstanding. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. Thank you, Todd. If we can remove blighted properties from our city, especially with our state dollars being returned to us, that is a good thing.
These are actually federal, so it's not all they're watching.
Even better. Thank you very much. Item number two. To award the contract for year twenty twenty-three LCDBG clearance program, phase two demolition of blighted structures to Pellerant and Sons contingent upon approval from the Office of State Community Development. We have a motion and a second, under discussion, Todd?
This contract will be the amount of seventy-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. These are the structures that had no asbestos present in the structures, so that's why the contract price is that much lower. You'll be demolishing eleven structures under this program.
Eleven properties, okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Todd. That's great news on both. Number three. To authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with the Acadiana Planning Commission relative to the ongoing development of the GIS mapping system and technology services. We have a motion and a second. Let me clarify that what we've done thus far was provided by a grant. If we do go forward with this as it's encouraged, that is going to be thirty thousand dollars a year and six thousand dollars per department. As Chris Gootro mentioned, uh, we're going to move to streets, we're going to move to streetlights. All these things that our citizens are going to be served better with a GIS mapping system. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
You said thirty thousand annually?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm glad you're committed chairman, so I have to ask you a question. Where's the money going to come from?
And that should be coming from the healthy sales tax department, okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
So once the grant money is exhausted, where, that's where it comes from, that department, take care of it?
Uh, yes, ma'am. The council's making a decision to use sales tax funds for this particular project. Thirty thousand a year, six thousand dollars per department.
For how long is that?
One year.
One year.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item four, to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with CH Fenstermaker and Associates pertaining to GIS three sixty degree video data collection and electrical system asset identification. Under discussion. We secured funding to continue upgrading our electrical system. That is independent of what we're doing tonight. We have grant money that is going to help us upgrade. The work with Fenstermaker and the GIS database, the Acadiana Planning Commission is in preparation to have a base inventory of assets for strategic spending as well as base inventory for storm assessments and response. Let's just say that's pretty relevant to the moment we're in right now. So counsel, that's a description of what and doing it with our electrical department. We own our own electrical system and the more we can get information. Uh, let's talk about asbills. Let's talk about Mr. Gene Sellers. The asbills are incomplete. Mr. Gene is enjoying his beautiful retirement. This gives us a mapping system we can go to at any time. Any other discussion?
That's all that we needed, but we did.
That's exactly why it's relevant.
The same funding?
Yes, sir. Sales tax. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And counsel, I'm going to uh, I'm going to drill down in this just for your information. The video would be sixteen thousand, the asset ID would be thirty-four thousand. That's a total of fifty thousand, one hundred dollars and that is the prep work system improvements. A greater description. Item five, to ratify payment of the invoice for Frank Harrison Asphalt in the amount of seven thousand dollars for repairs to road cuts at Gerard and St. Paul and Ray.
Second.
Chris, you want to expand on your asphalt contract?
Uh, mayor uh, asked me with um, a few months ago of how we're going to fix all the potholes in the city. Possibly don't have enough money to fix all the potholes in the city, but this is a start. Um, we're going to take um, take some money, about a hundred thousand from, from different sources and we're going to start this asphalt contract. He's going to come in with his paving machine, his, his roller. Um, we're going to buy the hot mix. Um, he's going to supply the labor and all the equipment. Um, we're going to fix potholes, we're going to roll potholes and fix them better than we can do with cold mix. Hot mix is a much better product. And then on some of the streets where we have some um, some bad areas, maybe say like a ten by ten area that's real bad, he'll grind that up and he'll pay that with paper. So it'd be better than a, a, better than just a, a pothole repair on some of those.
And Chris, is it accurate that these are sewer line cuts?
Um, not all of them are sewer line cuts. A lot of them are just roads breaking up. You know, roads that have been in the city for quite some time and once they get a crack in the water, it gets underneath them. Um, you know, starts bubbling up the asphalt. Uh, when we get to the sewer line and there's water um, um areas, um, we possibly going to blacktop those instead of C M because the guys in the area. We allocated the funds, so it might save some money if you wanted it that way. Um, what, what we plan on doing is taking it in great, it's every district will get a week to start. Um, I, I think uh, me and Tony has discussed uh, whatever we're going to, going to work on for him. It's up to the council person. Um, me and the split office has discussed it, had a little discussion with Ms. Perry uh, today. Um, y'all need to figure out what grid you want to put me on. We'll try to get it all done and hopefully we can move to the next grid in that week, you know? Um, the guy's prepared to brush all the streets that he's going to work on with his, with his broom. Uh, you know, this broom on, on the sweeper. He's, he's also prepared uh, you know how I want to say his own rules because the size has built up, he's going to, he's going to try to scrape most of those when he can, you know, in the areas that he can do it in. Um, so that's the plan that, that he has. Um, Ms. Perry?
I, I just wanted to tell you, I'd like to um, schedule a couple of days with you where during our lunch that we can write, so I can have you look at it to see. Um, it's a lot. I mean, not a lot, but I want to make sure that um, if I can do something with the problem that I'm having in some areas that perhaps we can do that while we're doing it.
Okay, right, and listen.
Because eventually it'll turn into a pothole.
Yes, um, the mayor's good about finding money, you know, she's always trying to get money from bad roofs and hopefully if we can find some more money and this works out, we can continue it again maybe in six months or, or next year, you know? Uh, our goal uh, with our office is to try to fix every pothole in the city.
So every part next week, we can get it together?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Are you going to work until the next one's got, or you got a time limit?
No, we're going to work until, I have a guy getting your approval tonight. I have a guy scheduled to possibly start Monday morning. But he, he's ready to go. Same guy that attached your street for me.
Oh, man, I need to go, I'm going to do some more.
He does uh, he, well, you know, we, we, I think we're going to start Tony's because we got it nailed down to where we're going to go. You know, wherever we go next is going to be amongst y'all and the mayor, where she wants me to go next. I'm not going to choose that because I'm, I don't want to get into, you know, all that stuff, but I think we're going to start with Tony because his district is already nailed down. Um, and Tony's surrounded by some state highways, so we can do the grid between state highways and this would be easy for the guy. So maybe if he only spends, you know, three days and four days in Tony's district doing that, pick up extra day to go with another, another grid, another street of, of costume party.
Okay.
Um, and Chris, while you're up there, Todd, uh, we're going to seek those funds from the other contractor?
The, the funds that would have been used to pay for the repairs were to be used, so it's really not deducted.
Okay.
Just won't be expended because of that contract.
Okay, good, withheld.
Talking about Gerard's.
Yeah.
We did Gerard and we did the rain, the rain street.
Yeah, we need to go after that guy because that, that has waited so long. Citizens in that area, Tony's district, but I have to say I'm in there every day and citizens have been so upset for so long. It's really nice and I want to thank you for spearheading this thing and getting it covered up.
So I'll tell you one other little thing, when we, um, I sit Willie out there and start digging it, you know? Usually when we, we put mix in a pothole, you know, in a road cut like that, eventually it'll set hard. For some reason, this one didn't set hard, falling out. Well, we found a pipe down in the hole that shouldn't have been there, so we removed the pipe. Um, he, what he did is he put a drill pipe across the road and he ran his bypass, he put his bypass flex hose, so the car wouldn't crush it. And when he removed the flex hose, he didn't remove the pipe. Could tell because it was covered with interior.
I just don't understand why we get these contractors that do the work and leave it before it's completed.
Well, we're, yeah, we're in government, so when we send those things out to bid, um, it's usually the lowest bid and if nobody has reported these guys, um, and they don't have a bad record, we have no, we have no reason to exclude them, right, Todd? So, you know, we in government, government, you know? Whether you agree with it or not, agree with it, that's just a system that, that we have to follow, so.
But they also handle this for not completing a contract due to certain number of days.
Yes, yes.
Because you get rain days and snow days.
Right, and we're on, we're on that, so Todd, we're working on that. Okay, any other questions about the problem?
Thank you.
Todd would hope that you would approve it so we can maybe try to make an approval for the, the citizens.
I move.
Okay, appreciate it.
We're going to talk a lot of that with you coming up in the agenda. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is your answer. Number six, to authorize the mayor to execute NDA with Urban Utilities to provide a high-level technology assessment and feasibility study for a technology infrastructure plan to support the city of Abbeville utility operations. Counsel? Motion by Councilman Harding.
Second.
Uh, second by Councilman Plaisos.
I was saying with the GIS.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Presentation, all right.
And with additional funding that we have for our utility department. So let's find out what we need and where we need it before the money arrives. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number seven. To appoint Mayor Rosalind White to the Transportation Policy Committee of the Acadiana MPO.
Move.
Second.
Uh, where's the MPO?
MPO, the Acadiana Planning Commission is our MPO.
The, the acronym's MPO?
Yes, sir.
What does that mean?
Oh, I can answer that first.
Thank you. Acronyms.
Okay, MPO means the Best Planning Organization.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is to appoint the mayor. We have a motion, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Put the mayor on that board. So let's see if we're going to put Chris on that board. Number seven, number eight, to appoint Chris Gootro to the transportation.
Move.
Of the Acadiana MPO. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
There are more to do.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Chris, for doing that. Number nine, Mr. Chris Gootro, to approve pothole repairs throughout the city.
Very good.
We have a motion and a second. Can you explain this project, Chris?
All right. That's all we just talked about.
Okay, but this is going to come from each of our council district funds in addition to city funds and.
Nothing, I mentioned earlier in the presentation that the mayor has found some money somewhere and I think she talked to all of us here about, about your money, you know? And the more you give, the more I can do, you know?
About every district appreciates that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have a district, I'm not giving any.
For, for, for Councilman Campbell, um, we're probably going to take one of our rides and he's going to pick some, some streets that are not on the grid or whatever y'all pick and we'll, we'll do it for him and wherever he wants to go.
More in my day. I'm asking him to please add some more in my day.
There you go.
Is the funds, is the funds allocated equally to the district?
Well, everybody's going to get a week, so yes, it'll be, it'll be equal. Everybody will get a week and we should exhaust the funds in five weeks.
That roof has pothole created, we have pothole Chris.
Yes. You asked me how to fix it, this is, this is my plan. I may fail. If I do, you know, I'll get up and try another plan, but I don't think I'm going to fail.
At least you're already working with, we'll get a call on this first.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Number ten, to approve the estimate from Crane Tech Incorporated in the amount of eight thousand and forty-four dollars and sixty-three cents.
Move, second.
To repair unit four ninety-three in the electrical department.
Uh, that's the pole truck. Um, we get a few repairs during the week and it turns out to get an injection problem, so that's a cost of eight thousand something dollars. We have to have it, we're not buying a pole truck anytime soon, hurricane season's here. Um, we have the pole truck, we also have to get a series of what it all grew for hurricane season if we need, but we, we have to repair it.
Yeah, no choice, yeah, that's he said.
Motion and a second on the table, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pair that truck, Chris. Number eleven. Mr. Chris Gootro again, discussion pertaining to the property located at three oh nine Veteran Memorial Drive. The Schwegman Building.
Uh, Schwegman, their letters will sit out today, once we've, we gathered all the information. Um, they need to secure the building, which is what I asked them to do, secure the building. Um, also secure the roof. The roof, the hole that everybody talked about, it's not the hole that people are imagining. There is a hatch that's open and there is a little hole, but it's not the big hole that everybody was imagining, so maybe that hole got fixed before my time. I don't know. When I drove up there, there was a homeless guy sitting in the front of the fire department. Uh, Chief Jude actually made a visit with me. Um, fire department, uh, one of the guys, I asked him to get out the truck to check on the guy. He was all right, he was just shooting another blanket. So we have some homeless hanging out there. We have homeless that were hanging out inside just fires were built during winter time um, to keep themselves warm, there's evidence of that all over. The building is infested with, with pigeons. So if you like pigeons, you can catch all the pigeons you want. There was a bad water leak from the fire line, you know, fire lines are not metered and we, 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 we track water loss and we had about fifty percent in the city. I don't think that's an accurate number because we're, we have an outdated system where we don't have meters to, to, to really meter that stuff. Marie does an estimate. Um, but that was a water leak that had been going on for God knows how long, inside of the building. So I called Larry Moore there, um, and that's tapped straight to the, to the main water line. So, uh, the farmer helped us get in. It was an unsecured building, so we had to write it in. But, but warmly, you can go some, I called Larry Moore, he came and he turned the valve off inside. So we got that taken care of. Um, I'm after him to clean the fence lines that has grown on the people's property in the back, it's growing on top of the, the, the power lines. So they're going to be asked to clean their fence lines there, they're going to be asked to mow their grass, they're going to be asked to secure their building. So I'm waiting on the response from them. The letters are going to go out in the morning. Um, Theresa put all the package together for me. That's where we stand. Just because I don't see any evidence of the, the structure being uh, dilapidated or unsafe, to be honest with you. The, the, the structure itself. So just because we don't like to look at the building, I don't have any reason to put it on paper that it's, it's uh.
What is the time date, were you giving them to comply?
Well, they get ten days from when the, the letter's mailed. Um, which the letter, I think is going to go out in the morning. I think I just put it on the mail slot, I think that was one of them. Uh, so we got ten days for them to, to respond and do something and after ten days, um, you know. Well, there's our attorney right there. I'm not an attorney, I'm just a public worker.
We'll bring it back to council.
He's helping me out right here, I'm struggling.
If they don't do what he's suggesting, then we bring it back to council. You authorize them to go do it and then we tax the property.
Eighteen years of suggestions, it's still sitting there. We just said abandoned building. Can we do anything at all?
Have we ever taxed?
Not let, not, not as far as tearing it down or anything.
No, but have we ever put a tax on?
Oh, not, not since I've been here, I don't think.
Have it done whatever needs to be done and just put it on their taxes?
We don't, well, we have to give them the opportunity to do it first, but once they don't do it, then we'll do it and then tax it. Thank you for that, Chris. Please stay up there.
We did fly drone over, so that's how we got pictures of the roof and stuff, and I took pictures of the inside.
Thank you, Chris. That good report, that's the most progress on that property in a long time. Councilman Plaisos can confirm.
So I'll try to do that again.
Thank you, that is great. Uh, that completes new business. Under old business, Mr. Chris Gootro, can you tell us about the budget and, and the starting boarding?
Okay, so um, the mayor called me, came over there, met her there. Uh, I encountered, um, in two weeks, just took place, I encountered a guy, um, coming out of a motel room. Um, bicycle parts all over the place, that wasn't there two weeks ago, so I guess he had found a place to start tearing bicycle parts. Don't know if he was stealing bikes or what he was doing, don't know if the bicycle laying on the ground, they cleaned it up. Um, so I tried to get in the country so I could figure out what was going on and he was telling me he was coming, he was walking away from me. I chased him around the building, he got on a bicycle and I said, man, you got to come here. He's pedaling his bike, telling me I'm coming, he's going the opposite way, so I just let him go, you know? It's not worth the risk. Um, so we decided in an emergency situation to, to board it up. Um, the mayor asked me, uh, we prefer parking all this stuff, you know, I don't do anything as he gives me the authority to do it. Um, we had, we had a search. I don't do anything as he gives me the authority to do it. Um, we had, we had a search, um, of the, called the police in. The police came. They searched every room. We arrested two people. Um, so there was two people living there. Um, this is some pictures that you've seen right there. Um, I know the hotel was abandoned. It was pretty decent shade. Now, every room has been almost.
Mr. Chris, can you tell the audience and us the current ownership of the property?
Yeah, so, um, some patels on it.
Patel.
Um, it was a foreclosure. The bank decided not to accept the foreclosure because they didn't want their liability.
Yeah, the bank, the bank filed to foreclose on the property and once they went and examined the property, they dismissed their lawsuit, basically saying, we're gonna eat the six hundred thousand he owes us because it's not worth us taking this building because there's too much liability. And, uh, so his debt is still like six hundred thousand.
So, who will, who will be insured?
The Patel's still.
So they're getting billed in for free?
No, they still owe the bank. The the debt's still there, but the bank's not willing to foreclose on it. Like, they, they don't want the property.
It's adjudicated to the police service, so we don't know what's gonna happen with that.
How many would it cost to board up that building?
Well, okay, so let me, uh, let me continue. So the mayor asked me if my team could take on this job to save the taxpayer the money. Um, so I, uh, talked to Willie. I thanked God. I have Willie. Willie said, we can do anything, you know? So, um, we started pricing the material, uh, priced it, found a place to buy it. Um, there was short on plywood. I called Willie at, uh, one, one fifteen on on Monday. It was raining. I said, hey, you got all the material? He said, man, I boarded up the first first door already. So he had already started. In two hours, he had twenty-five rooms boarded up, ran out of plywood. So we can, uh, which I thought was gonna take us a week. So we started, um, once we board up everything, we're gonna, uh, clean up the grounds. Get rid of all the trash that's all over the place. We're gonna mow the grass and spray it, hopefully we'll be able to go back.
And I could like that they all own out the whole town here in Abbeville?
Uh, that's what I'm told.
And so.
Chris, how many rooms are there?
Uh, it's gonna take me a hundred and two sheets of plywood, um. That's windows and doors, so that's two, that's two, so that's one, two, so that's fifty-one rooms. Fifty-one, about approximately fifty-one rooms. So we're taking pictures of each room before we board. We're taking a picture, a picture of the the door for for documentation, the best we can.
I have a question for you, boy. With them owning, with them owning another hotel here in Abbeville, can we force their hands some?
We're, we're looking into that. We're trying. One of the things we're doing is, there's a, there's a criminal statute. If the blighting is to such a degree, uh, it can be, you can be charged with a crime and we phone everything to the.
Somebody can get hurt, you know?
Well, they won't have to Chris's finish. They they were before, but yeah, but we're gonna go after them personally and we're gonna do everything we can. I'm not sure that they own another hotel. Uh, they definitely working at another hotel, but we'll, we'll see.
If that's an injury or something that happened on the property, who who has the liability?
Yeah. Property owner.
Patel.
Mm-hmm.
And they can't pay a six hundred thousand dollar mortgage, so certainly they're not gonna pay.
He's already filed bankruptcy over that debt.
Again, I I mentioned something to Chris and the council. I'm just giving it some thought. We don't have homelessness here in Abbeville. And, uh, yeah, we don't have one.
I know you read my mind.
We've had a couple of those and I already made contact with someone who may be able to step in and buy that or work something out. I don't know, but I'm concerned about the homelessness here. Not just the homelessness, but we have people here that that are barely making it. That maybe could be worked out somehow that they could be housed there with their families. Uh, we have more people on the street now.
So, so the mayor has initiated a homeless plan that she's gonna come to the council with in very near future. Uh, her and I are working to put together the, the, the procedure and the policies behind it. But we are looking to put something in place to deal with that because two of the people that were there were just stuck here and were like, really just trying to get a way back to Texas. So, you know, the city could buy their bus tickets, but right now we really don't have anything in place to do that.
We know when I was with Shaw Protection, we had a homeless shelter in Paris, right across over there, uh, towards, towards, uh, near the coast of city, and that that place was full. I can tell you it was full. Then we had one here on, uh, where was it? Um, Hawthorne, maybe? In that area, that was one there for a while, too. So there, there's definitely a need for the shelter here, I think. And for displaced people and people that just don't have anything or people that are on the street. So maybe something could be worked out. I appreciate you submitting that plan. I was already getting behind it.
It's a shame it got so trash so so quick, you know?
Yeah.
Um, because it really would have just needed a good, good painting and an update for somebody that bought it. Now, like, you know, they go to the ark and steal the bags of clothes and go in there and go throw it and take what they want and leave the rest in there. So it's full of clothes. We just boarded it up, though. We not, you know, I don't have to get my guys sick or.
At least they have a place to take a bath instead of the fountain.
Well, there's more running along electricity, so you could take a bath there. And the swimming pool's covered, you know? And there were swimming in the square, uh, this weekend.
Yes, thank you, T G Paul.
Thank you.
For getting that. Mr. Brady, you had a question?
Yeah, cool question. Um, maybe that we spent our tax money on boarding up and things of that nature. Are we gonna build a Tony's showroom?
Well, attorney said you're seeking avenues to go after.
So in the police jury's eyes, they don't wanna do anything on any adjudicated property because they don't want their liability right barred, dragged in the courtroom, uh.
They just don't wanna spend the funds. So, so to answer your question, though, we can't go to the police jury and demand payment for them, but we can from the property owner. Which doesn't seem like we're gonna have much luck because he's in bankruptcy, but.
I did contact the D A's office today to talk to one of the D As. They supposed to be checking and see what kind of charge. We can specifically go after the owner, you know, to charge them.
I sent an email to.
Yeah.
He got it.
Yeah, he contacted me this morning, so I I reached out to the D A's office. Thank you. That's good information. Chris, thank you. That's all helpful.
Thank you.
That concludes new business and old business. Under departmental reports and updates. Number one, engineers. Nothing tonight? Kim?
Nothing.
Number two, Bart?
Nothing.
Chris, anything to add to your whole presentation? Byron, it's your turn.
You got a hundred and eighty-three hands for that, so you won't have much to eat.
What was that?
You don't have a document in your hand, so you can't eat too much.
All right, so, uh, this past weekend, we wrapped up, uh, our twenty twenty-five, um, summer, spring, summer baseball session, um. T D came to town, uh, basically with the high school showcase tournament. You had, uh, teams from Houston, uh, Bogey City, um, Mississippi, and all over the state of Louisiana. Um, that was total fifty-one teams, um, not all fifty-one were in town, but they played between the complexes between here, Crowley, Youngville, and Acadian High School. Um, very good baseball. I even had some college scouts in town, uh, so some people did get recruited. Um, so that was another plus as well, um. Other than that, um, baseball's done. We're looking to the fall to start doing a couple of fall tournaments, um, so we're about to start getting that in line. Of course, we'd like to bring that, um, U triple S A Winter International World Series, the Toronto Top Turner, that's normally the first weekend in December. Um, other than that, right now we have flag football registration that's starting up. Um, just because you may not see as much action in Como Park, doesn't mean that we're still not doing hours of research, um, going back to the X's and O's, seeing what we may need for the, for the next season or whatnot, um. So don't think that we'll take the time off. We're not not seeing as much. But I mean, like I said, I mean, home at night, sometimes I get tired of phone calls during the day. I'm I'm still working at night. Laptop's with me every part of the day, um. So we can keep making this city and that feel successful.
Yeah. Thank you. Great job being a team. Tell J Bird also, uh, great job. It was wonderful to see those players in our town at Mass, at Riverfront, at Guzmies. So don't think they just run here and leave.
They do not.
Waiting for our city. Thank you so much for that.
Any questions?
Uh, very soon.
Thank you, Byron.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Um, how was the, uh, the A Como facility being utilized?
Um, basically within our, what we offer, we have what we offer, which is the flag football, video basketball, and our springtime baseball softball sessions. There are outside organizations that wants to use the facility, and then they go through special events permitting, getting insurance in or whatnot. And once everything's on the table with that, we make sure that the dates that they want to secure the facility are open. Once that's open, then there's a cost for per field, per day, and so forth.
Okay, but, um, the facilitator, I think there was an organization that wanted to set up a program under your umbrella. What is the process?
Like, is it in our sports umbrella or is it?
Let's just say, um, if there was a gang team.
Okay.
That wanted to, um, start a program under the parks and recreation, but in cooperation with you. How would you go about setting that up?
Okay, so here goes the sticky part. Abbeville Parks and Rec, the city of Abbeville, would have to take care of that or would that fall into Q S A?
Q S A provides all recreation to the kids of the city at at this time.
Correct. So, in that case, would have to be with Jeremy to get all the insurance, what it will cost for insurance, um, how much it would be per kid or whatnot, to, it'll be just like a baseball, basketball, football registration to where everything falls into place. So basically, it would need to be a meeting set up with the Q S A staff of getting an umbrella of any other sports.
Okay.
Ms. Felicia, if you can give Byron your contact information, we'll be happy to work on that and get Kristen, Jeremy, and Byron to work on the solution of what you think you'd like to see. And, uh, Byron, can you make sure you get, get Ms. Felicia's?
No, I understand. I was just trying to find out what other program that they have and if there was an organization wanting to, organizations wanting to come in to help facilitate different programs. That's about it.
Gotcha. So add on to beside the baseball, basketball, football, add on to other sports in the.
All right.
Gotcha.
Great question. Not necessarily sports, academic.
Activities is also.
Your activities.
So that would have to be, well, we'll get that.
Thank you, Byron.
Thank you.
Uh, next, as I mentioned, the mayor's on personal business this evening. All I have is a thank you and appreciation to everyone who attended the meeting. It is your business that we are conducting here, and we can't do it without you. Our YouTube viewers, you are part of this. If you're unable to attend, all of our meetings are broadcast on YouTube. So please stay involved in your city and become a solution to what we have in society. Thank you. Next, Chris, you gonna handle the chief's report? He didn't have anything that he told me. He's all good? Well, please tell him I said thank you for getting the swimmers out of the fountain in Madigan Square. I had to make sure I saw what I saw.
You say, good councilman, you say.
Chief Jude?
Done.
Okay, council, we'll start on the left. Councilman Campbell?
Thank you, uh, I would just like to take this opportunity to introduce a former Lafayette City Councilman who's in the audience, Mr. Chris Wing. You stand up and say.
Thank you, Councilman.
Well, Chris has been introduced, so welcome, Chris, and thanks for having us.
Councilman Plaisance?
Well, um, it's my same street out there, St. Peters. Everything was fine for a while, and then last Friday night, they had a big group out there. So can we get the officers to not just pass on break, but to turn and go through on, uh, St. Peters? And tell those people to leave from there? Can we do that?
Well, if they're in roadway.
Well, they're in roadway, all right.
They have some people on the road or something like that. How fast they're on to the, this guy came to. If they're in roadway, they're probably, you know, they don't have a song. Only not causing the spirit.
So law and reg doesn't apply there.
Not with a toll party, not.
They want city right away.
In the road, then we, uh, move on.
All right, that's all I have.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hart?
Yes. Chris, you said my district, my new possibility, sorry?
Possibly, depending on the weather. I just checked the guy. It was bruised and kind of wrapped him up, you know?
All right. Uh, second of all, I want to thank everybody that, uh, for their thoughts and prayers. From like opening the past, the way this past week, we really appreciate it, you know, y'all made it a lot easier for us. So thank you, everyone, you know?
God bless.
God bless. God bless your family.
Meeting adjourned.
The, uh, next meeting said August fourth. That's on my date.
I know. It's my fault.
Okay, okay, I'll stop, stop with that.
I noticed it and I put him on Facebook. I was like, up and forth on the slide.
So the bed.